Good morning, everybody. I'd like to go ahead and convene the meeting this morning. This is the meeting of the Warren County Board of Supervisors. Today's date is Tuesday, March 21st, 2023, and it's 9:30 a.m., and we're in the Warren County Supervisor's Boardroom. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We do have one item on our agenda that we're going to delete. That's item number three, the redistricting committee discussion with appointments. We're anticipating a couple more applications, and we want to give everybody a chance to get on that committee that wants to get on that committee. So the first item on our agenda this morning is the consent agenda. Give the board a couple minutes to bring a motion forward.
I would move the consent agenda as printed.
Okay, second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second on our consent agenda. Roll call, please.
McIntyre?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye. That passes. The second item is consider, we're considering the approval of the DCAT contracts with possible action. Michaela, do we have anybody here from DCAT?
Thank you.
What's that? Oh, you're here, okay. Do you want to come up and kind of go through this stuff?
Okay, so we've got four contracts. These are typical, just has us renew them every year. Has us renew them every year. And so when they are up, they are six-year contracts, so when they're up, we have to write a new contract. So the DCAT contract is new this year. The other three are renewals, which is standard.
Okay.
Could you just highlight, just briefly, what services are provided as a result of these contracts?
Sure. So a lot of what I do is resource coordination for families either involved with the department or have other needs within the community. So I'm hooking them up with resources, working with them directly to get them connected with those. Our family assistance contract is in partnership with the department. So DHS families that are in need of various items for safe case closure, we are able to provide those things. They range from gas cards for transportation to mental health appointments, visitations with their children, beds for their children if they need them for safe case closure, those types of things.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Any other questions for DCAT?
Thank you. Do we need to make a motion altogether, Doug, or do we do these separately? What do you think?
I'm happy with doing them on.
I would entertain, or feel free if you did them all at once.
Okay. All right, I will make a motion to approve the DCAT contracts as outlined one through four in item two.
Second.
We have a motion and a second roll call, please.
McIntyre?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye. Motion is approved. The next item on our agenda is to consider Warren County isolation and quarantine policy and procedures 2023 with possible action.
Good morning. This is a standard policy for the isolation and quarantine from the Warren County Health Services Department. Basically, the only changes in it were the change from Iowa Department of Public Health to include the merge with the Iowa Department of Human Services. So it's the Iowa Department of Health and Human Services. Yep, yep.
I was going to ask you what the difference was because I was reading through it and trying to understand what the change was.
Yeah, those are the only changes, the merge between the two agencies so that it's spelled out as Iowa Health and Human Services now.
I do have a further question. As I was reading through the policy, is this a standard policy that's approved by all counties in the state? Or is this just unique to Warren County?
I believe all county health departments do have a same standard policy in place, so.
So it's not like this is somehow expanded or contracted compared to anybody else's in the state?
That's correct. Yep.
That was the one question I had as I read through it. Because after what we've been through with the pandemic recently, I started reading the approval process and policy guidelines on this, and it's pretty direct in terms of what the authority, or at least it's stated as being very direct in terms of the authority given to the health group.
Health department.
Yeah, health department. So that's why I read it with a little bit different eyes than maybe I would have four years ago.
Mm-hmm. Yep, definitely. It has made an impact on, and I think it, yeah, it kind of makes it more real, to be honest with you, rather than.
I mean, it doesn't mince words in terms of the authority. Of course, the Board of Supervisors and a number of other groups are required to be, at least made aware and sign off on this through the policy. Could you speak to that process just a little bit? Because that was the one thing that, as I was reading through it, I was trying to decide, is this strictly a notice situation? Or is there really a consultation that's involved with these other groups, Board of Supervisors just being one of those?
I think there's actually a combination of both, to be perfectly honest with you. I think there is discussion that's to be had. And then you also have to make sure that you are notifying people appropriately as outlined in the policy. So I think it's a combination.
So it isn't just a black and white?
I, no, I do not believe that it's just black and white. I think it really varies depending on the situation that's occurring, so.
Now, like I said, I was, I read it with a different set of eyes and thought process after going through what we've gone through in the last three years.
Absolutely. Yeah. Yeah, I don't think it had, it was gratefully as utilized, to be honest with you, until it actually becomes real and we're dealing with a situation like the pandemic, so.
Exactly.
Anything else?
I have nothing.
Thank you.
Thank you, Joel.
Thank you.
So I'll make a motion to approve the Warren County isolation and quarantine policy and procedures for 2023.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Can we get a roll call, please?
McIntyre?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye. Motion passes. The next item on our agenda is to consider the application for use of Warren County annex for the Indianola Young Professionals fundraiser with possible action. Anybody here to speak on behalf of the young professionals?
I don't believe so. So Amanda with the Indianola Chamber was just requesting it for April 1st from 9:00 to 6:00 to use as a putt-putt hole. Since it's nonprofit, they are requesting to waive the rental fee.
I'm assuming this is a, there won't be any alcohol served within the premises, correct?
What is our, being new to the board, I'm not sure what our policy is for rental on facilities.
It's usually a rental fee of $250, which they're asking us to waive. And they hold insurance. So I don't know if the insurance is placed on this item. It's, it says here in the application, damage deposit of $1,000 and special event insurance required and must be paid secured 30 days prior to the event. So does Amanda have a plan to put insurance in place for this event? Okay. All right. I would kind of be of the position that we wait and see what the details are around insurance before we approve this, but if the board has something different than that.
I would, yeah, let's defer it.
Okay. We'll defer item number five.
Before you defer it, could you approve it with the potential of the insurance policy? I think we've done that before for another group, just because it's April 4th or 1st.
I'm not real comfortable with that. I mean, Amanda's not here to tell us what her plans are, so. I mean, I think in a special meeting, we can vote on this, or we can, we can meet her needs if we understand what her, what her plans are for insurance. That would be my opinion, but I don't, I don't want to be a stickler if the rest of the board feels differently.
I just feel like we've had these, the agenda and the meeting packet for a day now. We could have made phone calls yesterday if we had questions about it. I, I wouldn't want to hold up their event, but I will defer to the chair.
Supervisor Snow.
I would tend, I think we should defer, frankly, because we don't have all the information here that I think we really need.
Okay. I still think we can accommodate the event.
Yeah, I think we can in another meeting if there's a, if there's some more information that could be gathered prior to another gathering, that would be.
We've had events in the past where they went in, they wanted to use one of our facilities, and they went in to look at the insurance cost and decided not to do it based on, on the cost. So I think just understanding what it costs to have the insurance in place is something I would like to understand before I would pass it. And their willingness to provide the insurance. So let's defer item number five for now. And I'll give Amanda, I'll give, I'll work on this. I'll give her a call and tell her what we, we need and work it out. We can work it out. All right. Item number six is to consider the approval of the five-year construction program for the secondary roads department with possible action. Good morning, David.
Morning. So we already have the public hearing process for this, and it's been posted on the website as well. We've received no comments in regards to this year's five-year construction program. So our staff is recommending approval at this time.
Okay. Any questions for David?
Thank you for putting it together. It's a lot of work to do that. And you've done a good job in terms of our road system here and keeping it maintained. So this is just part of that ongoing process, so thank you.
Appreciate it.
You know I appreciate you and your staff.
Okay, do you want a motion? Yes, please. Okay, I would move that we approve the five-year construction program for the secondary roads department as has been presented to us.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
McIntyre?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Motion passes. Item number seven is to consider a speed limit change on Fillmore Street west of 73rd Avenue with possible action.
Thank you. We would recommend a speed zone reduction change here to 35 miles per hour. It's a half-mile dead-end gravel road. There are a couple blind driveways out there. So for safety reasons and due to density of residential use, we recommend dropping it to 35 miles per hour. And I have maps if you'd like to see them.
I'm just curious, are all the residents aware of that in agreement as well?
They're not aware of it. It does, basically, we do a lot of driveway entrance permits in the office, and when we go out there and see the density and see the blind driveways, that's when we make that judgment call. And then another driveway permit doesn't quite meet our sight distance requirements, but this would allow that driveway to be permitted if the speed zone is reduced. And here's a map.
Thank you.
Thank you, David.
So that, that's a visual of kind of the density in that area of residential use. There's not a lot of agricultural use left in that location.
What's the current speed limit, David?
It's not posted, so it's 55 during the day and 50 at night.
So this would be on 73rd.
It'd be, yeah, the red boxed out area.
Yeah, yeah. There's a lot of activity back in there.
I have no questions or issues with changing the speed limit. Any questions for David on this from the board? Comfortable?
Yeah.
Okay.
David, just, I guess I do have one. So the neighbors in the area didn't request this. This is a engineering department-generated speed limit change.
Yeah, that's correct. When we go out and do the entrance permits, if we see high densities of use, we'll kind of discuss it internally and figure out if, based on engineering judgment, a speed zone might be needed. I would hope people don't drive 55 on that road currently, but. Signs are a lot of maintenance, so you don't want to get too crazy putting signs everywhere because there's a cost to that. And then they don't become as, they don't grab your attention as much, too, if you oversign areas. So we, we do like to be cautious on the use of especially regulatory signs, but in this case, we felt it, it might be necessary.
What sort of notice will go out to the residents in the area, if any?
There's usually no notice. We do the one calls and then post the 35 mile per hour speed zone signs according to MUTCD standards.
And then is there currently a posted speed limit on that road now?
No, there's no posted speed limit currently.
So this would be a totally new posting?
Yeah, correct.
Is it possible to notify everybody in the neighborhood that there is going to be a change before the signs go up?
That's possible, if that's what the board would desire.
I think that would be the right thing to do, especially since there's not been any feedback. And I think it'd be good to have rationale as to why and use the engineering department rationale as to how it fits into policy. But I would request that a letter of notice go out to everybody in the area that would be using this area.
Yeah, we'll get the postage ready and.
Yeah. I would request that, that we have a letter of notice go out to everybody. I've just been at too many meetings here recently where people don't feel, especially in the rural areas, do not feel like they're notified very well. They don't get a newspaper anymore or anything like that. So they wouldn't necessarily see our, our action here today, and all of a sudden, there's a sign going up.
Yeah, based on our experience, most people welcome a speed zone change.
I'm sure they would. I think this is just a good extra step. And it's probably good for the engineering department, shows that you're doing the extra part to notify folks before it's just boom, right there.
There's also a personal responsibility that citizens have to be aware of what's going on in their government, too.
I agree. It's a two-way street, but I think it would be good if we could just send a nice notice out to everybody, letting them know that there's going to be a change, and then including that the rationale as to how our decision was made.
Yeah, we can do that. It's not a problem.
Do you want to make a motion with that?
I would make a motion that we lower the speed limit on Fillmore Street west of 73rd as outlined. David, is there a specific area from point to point where this is going to go into effect?
Just Fillmore Street, the half-mile stretch there west of 73rd Avenue.
Okay. If you'd include that in my motion, I would like that.
Yeah, so if you approve this today, we will make sure to send letters out prior to doing the one call and then prior to putting the signs up.
Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second roll call, please.
McIntyre?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye. Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, David.
Thank you.
The next item on our agenda today is the presentation from Warren County Historical Preservation Commission regarding updates to Scott Ridge Cemetery. Antonio, good morning.
Good morning. So I would like to do a clarification. The first couple of minutes, I'm going to be speaking as a preservation chairperson. After that, as just a citizen of Allen Township. So the first part, I wanted to make sure, I'm not sure, I know Crystal is very familiar with the location. I'm not sure if Darren and Mark are in terms of the cemetery and the church relationship on Scott Ridge Road. The church was consecrated in 1853 and as a building in Warren County is the first building was ever registered with the National Registry of Historic Locations, which is a pretty cool thing. We only have 11 in the whole county. So the importance of the church is not just because it's really cute church, per se. Everybody that was involved is part of the founders of the Scott Ridge Road. It's called Scott Ridge because most of them came from Scotland. So when you go to the cemetery today, you see tombstones from the early settlers of the area. So there's a lot of history significance for a lot of people that live in the area, that move away, descendants. The cemetery, even though they're different plots, it's not the same property. They're right next to each other. So I did some pictures, and I think they were put in your package. And I think it would probably be easier for you to understand what I'm talking about if you follow the pictures. There's a first one that I took that shows the church. And then on the right-hand side of the picture, you see the cemetery, and there's a gate there. On the other side, the fence continues all the way in front of the church, and then it goes towards Carlisle in the area in front of the cemetery. The fence is not regular steel, it's cast iron. It's very old. And because of the significance of the church and the fact that the church is a registered building, I actually am being very interested in to maintain it. So over two and a half years ago, I got invited to a board trustees meeting by two former trustees that they live right next to the church and the cemetery, which is Alex Hammer and Veronica Hearn. So at that time, neighbors, they shared with me that they want basically to remove the fence once and for all because it was in the way of mowing. So I did a presentation to the trustees that day, telling them that we possibly have some areas that we can assist in the preservation of the fence, per se, and paint and getting money through grants through the state of Iowa. And that day, it was kind of a scary day. There was a big food fight with the trustees, and I don't think my message got anywhere. We left there feeling really uncomfortable, to say the least. So a full year and a half passed, and I got a phone call from Mrs. Fogel, which is, I believe, the clerk right now for the board's trustees, asking if there's a way the Historic Preservation Commission will be able to assist them in do something with the fence, AKA paint it, fix it, whatever. So I suggested, we would love to hear from her, and I invited her to our meeting. And that way, the full board of Preservation Commission will be there, and we can actually listen to her. She did. This is last fall, and at that time, we all agree that we would love to help trying to get money from the state. And at the same token, we will need from the board's trustees to get estimates, at least three, that we would like to see. Because I cannot go to the state and ask for X amount, you know, a blank check to do any repairs. It would look like ding-dongs. So basically, that's what we did, and I have not heard a single peep since. Today is, I forget what date, is today the 20th? Thank you. And I found out on Friday when a gentleman stopped at my farm and introduced himself as Kelly Speedman, I think is his last name, I hope I'm pronouncing this correctly, Pinman, Jr., and he was giving a flyer about, which is this one. I don't think I sent a copy to you guys. I'm sorry about that. Basically, they're asking for donations to raise money through GoFundMe to pay for the repairs of the fence. And I said, oh, that's kind of interesting because I thought we're going to really fix this instead of removing it. Him and a bunch of other Allen Township members, they're up in arms with this idea of removing the fence. So I said, well, there's a lot of background. I explained to him a little bit of my experience with the board's trustees and where we were. And I said, I'm very surprised about the fact that they want to remove it because we left a conversation that they're going to approach us with estimates to move forward. So that concludes my presentation as a commissioner. Now I'm going to speak as Alfonso, Alessio, and owner of a farm on Scott Ridge Road, 14536 Scott Ridge Road, in which we are basically less than a quarter mile from the church. I was blown away by the fact that this continued to be an issue. And it's not an issue about maintenance of the fence itself, it's an issue of the fences in the way of mowing. To me, that's not really a justification to remove it. I understand that things have been done in a certain way for a long time, way before I bought my farm. But when we're talking about public monies here, it should be number one, transparency. The public should be notified what's going on. And I think is at the service to the community, especially in days that monies are tight all around, that we are not following suit and listening to people. So with that said, I made copies for you, and I'm sorry if this didn't make it to the thing. I was having technical issues because I got them via text, and I didn't know how to get out a text and print it. So I, here we go, made notes for you. And basically, this is Allen Township trustee meeting, dated February 21st, 2023, 4:00 p.m. And it's kind of fascinating to read. It's basically, it says trustees Woody Fogel, Paula Sampson, Steve Bernhardt, and Clerk Peggy Fogel, which is husband and wife, by the way. They met at 14769 Buchanan. I believe that's their residence. The meetings were reviewed, and then this goes down, we discussed the need to renew, blah, blah, blah. And then the next paragraph, it says, "We discussed the ARPA application for funding of fencing renovation and repair. Current fencing repair estimates were reviewed. There was only one willing to sandblast and paint the fence we could locate." I'm sorry. "There was only one willing to sandblast and paint the fence we could locate. Others required the fence to be taken down and restored after the work was done. Pierce Brothers indicated they would take it down based upon an hourly rate. Bid for Midwest sandblasting came to $19,500. Then an updated bid was obtained replacing aluminum fencing from the Central Iowa Fencing, estimation for $13,000," and it goes down. It says, "Discussion followed regarding applying for ARPA funds to help cover the cost. After discussion about the cost involved, Steve Benhart made a motion to remove the fence. Paula seconded motion to remove the fence carried. A letter from Warren County Attorney outlining the procedures for selling the fence was shared with the trustees. Notices must be placed newspapers for a public hearing to discuss selling the fence. Per resolution, the trustees will determine how to sell the fence with proceeds going into the cemetery fund. The hearing and notices will be done when the weather warms up. Discussion about the hope to turn Carlisle Cemetery over to City Carlisle followed." So for what we can read here, there was just a done deal that they want to move the fence. It was per resolution done here. There was no mention of conversation with Historic Preservation Commission in any way, shape, or form. They was share one bid, which is the one that makes reference here. So after this gentleman stopped at my farm, I did some searching. First of all, if we're going to do some sort of work, I would like the money to stay in the county. So I hope everybody can find within Warren County that they will be willing to do the job. Well, to my surprise, people cannot do the job, recommending me this gentleman that I put him in your copies. Following down, it's called Central Iowa Welding and Repair. And this was sent to Mrs. Fogel in October 19, 2022, which is the fall of last year. This was never shared to us as a commission. I found out this because I called companies to get a better estimate and see what was done. So as you see, the repair, it was only $2,150. And I said to the owner of the company, could you tell me if this is still a valid price? Because we're talking October 22. And he said, yes. We can totally do the work, and they're not related to the people who are sandblasting. They're just, they're colleagues. Sometimes they get jobs, and one does the actual fixing, and the other one does the painting and sandblasting. Sometimes they get jobs and one does the actual fixing and the other one does the painting and sandblasting, which I thought it was great. So we're talking twenty-one hundred dollars here, which I think is very reasonable. For the pictures, you see a lot of the damage. I tried to make pictures of all the areas that the fence needs to be fixed for you to see. And I think it will be in the best interest of the community to preserve the fence and fix it. And we're not talking about nineteen thousand dollars, which I think to me is outrageous in any expected thing. Then I talked to Mike Pinnock, which owns a lot of land around the church. He's fired, just buried there a few months ago. And he sent me a copy, which I think you probably has a, have a copy of a screenshot of a can of paint?
Yes.
Okay. Well, that paint I did on purpose. He, Mike, sent that to me yesterday. And he just painted some of his Morton buildings on the bottom part with this paint. He said, the quality of the paint is so incredible. If you use a key to try to scratch it, there's no scratch. It's like a porcelain after it's done. It's expensive. It's a hundred and sixty dollars per gallon. But we're not going to need that many gallons to do. And it will be way cheaper than nineteen thousand dollars. With all that said, I would like to be able to go back to the community as a member of the township and basically express that this is going to be done. One thing I missed to mention, the trustees gave these citizens that they are doing the fundraising only thirty days to come up with the money. And those thirty days started from last Monday. So we have, what, April fifteenth, when it's going to be the next, no monies being raised, it's going to be taken down, which I think is a horrible idea. Not only because you're going to damage the possibility of the removal of the status of the historical registry from the church. The church has not been aware of that at all. I talked to a bunch of the people. And being good neighbor, I think, is again, part of the interest of all this. My second issue that it goes back to this from the get-go and from the beginning is the fact that the mowing is something is being talked in over and over and over as this an impediment to mow. Two years ago, when I did the presentation, my husband, he was there. He's a landscape architect licensed. And he suggested, take the grass on the bottom of the fence and put flowers. Simple, simple change. It will cost nothing. We can get the kids from Carlisle School to do some community work. They get points for that. And put plants. And you don't have to touch the fence ever again. So there is solutions. The other problem is when we're talking about granting monies, I would like you to read the last paragraph of this letter of the township meetings that I give you in the blue thing. And it says, Steve Benhart made a motion to pay Woody eight thousand dollars to most Scottrich, AKA the cemetery this year, and ten thousand to Carlisle for mowing. Paula seconded. Woody abstained. Motion carried. So I was kind of, and this I brought this subject to some of the neighbors earlier, about how boards of trustees, their self-awareness themselves, work that is paid with tax dollars. And I have a serious issue with that as well. Because where are the other bids that they show they are the most cost-effective one? Then I called my friend Jamie Fitzgerald, which is the county auditor for Paul County, and I expressed what's happening. And he was without words. He basically said, normally trustees, and they have to pay them themselves in an hourly basis, which varies between twelve to fifteen dollars an hour for any work they do, manage the cemeteries and all. So the fact that we are, the three of you, monitoring the monies, how they're, this board trustee has never been audited, ever. And that's a problem. Jamie said that they should be audited in a regular basis like anybody else. Because just to keep transparency, again, I should be able to go there and see the other three proposals and go to bed feeling that my money is being used properly. There's nothing like that. Minutes or meetings, they should be public knowledge. They should be posted somewhere. We have internet today. There's no justification. I know the code was written a long time ago. The things should change. The pandemic has changed us in terms of using Zoom for meetings that before it was on here. Technology, unfortunately, government, not just here in Warren County, it's all over. We don't get up to technology. We're always pacing behind a few years. But I think it will be really important because when you calculate eight thousand dollars, and just play with me here for a second, you divide that by four hours. You're talking about a hundred and thirty-three average days of mowing. The season the grass grows is around May first through October thirty-first. We're talking two hundred days. Are we mowing that every day? Really? I mean, seriously, I think it should be changed. So my suggestion to the board supervisors and Mr. Kelly Spindman, I said, we would like to help with the restoration of the fence. We would like to help to get funding for that. But I don't want to write a check to the trustees. I want to pay directly the contractors that they're going to do the job and preserve the integrity of our historic place. And that's basically why I wanted to do the introduction to you. And I think it should be in good governance to get through the auditor's office doing audits, which is a law. The other thing too, in the Iowa Code, three fifty-nine point thirty-five states clearly that any cemetery that has been used for more than twenty-five years and is continually being used, funds for that cemetery should be to improve and maintain the same. It's very clear language. I'm not a lawyer. I'm not pretending to be one. But it's very clear language. And I'm telling you, removing is in any way, shape, or form, maintaining, not improving. Because a fence made of aluminum in a hundred and seventy-two-year-old cemetery is no place. There's vandalism going on in cemeteries all around the country. The fence, even though kids can jump it over, is a visual barrier that it should be maintained. So I leave it in your hands to try to rein people in. And I think, you know, I know this goes on and it needs to be stopped. Because we're talking about, again, public monies. We all pay and get livid for it. And I live down the street and I would like to see the church being preserved. And again, I'm speaking like a citizen of Allen Township. Thank you for your time.
I got a question for you, Alfonso. So you brought up a lot of different things.
Yep.
Is the fence removal related to the mowing contracts or are those two separate items? Like, are you, are you saying this is all one project?
No, the removal of the fence is being the issue that the people, in this case, a trustee member is doing for doing the job. They told me in my face that I was too cumbersome to mow around it.
Okay.
So, you know, it hasn't been maintained for a long time. You see for the pictures that the paint is peeled. But that doesn't guarantee warrants to take it down. Because my issue I have right now is today is the fence. Tomorrow will be the monuments because they're in the way of mowing. I mean, let's be clear here. This is nonsense. So it should be fixed.
So the total cost to fix it, is it the two thousand one hundred and fifty dollars?
That, that will fix all the areas that I tried to photograph. They're bended or broken or disattached, which is only five of them in the whole extension. And it seems like because of the mowing, I don't know who did it or a cow, there's one is like, so this kid that Trevor, the one that did the proposal, I asked him, I said, what extent of your job? He said, I will straighten it back. It will be straight how it should be. And I fuse all the areas. It's very tricky to fuse cast iron. It cannot be just like that. So it has to be braced properly. The good thing is you do the brace, it's going to be in the lower. You cannot tell. It's a very pretty fence. I mean, it has beautiful ornaments. You see them in the white, painted white. You know, I've traveled all over Europe. These fences, they're seven hundred years old. And not because how old they're taken. Buckingham Palace has been there for what? It's the same fence. Nobody's changing. Oh, let's put aluminum because that looks better and we don't have to maintain. It just blows my mind. I know it's a small town, but come on, people.
With the Central Iowa Welding Repair, that doesn't include painting though, does it?
No, no.
That's strictly the repair of the fence.
Yes. But the reason why I brought that, unfortunately, I, I'm waiting for proposals from two other companies that they will do the job. And then the light went off. One of my neighbors said, he used to have the kids in the town, Carlisle High School. And they told me, kids will be happy to get points to do the actual paint. We buy the paint and they do the job. We buy the brush.
A little black spray paint would do the trick.
Yeah, it can be a community thing and get people. I mean, the weather is getting better. Why not? You know, I think there is very little of kids today. They're on their phones all the time. So it's gonna, wouldn't be a bad idea to get them out to do something that, you know, benefits everyone.
I have a question here on jurisdiction.
That's my question. Go ahead.
And so maybe, you know, from a jurisdictional standpoint, what is the body that's responsible or owns the cemetery?
With the cemetery, according to what I understand, it's owned by a trust of sorts that is managed by the trustees. It's no property from the, from the church, unfortunately. That was another thing I suggested.
Cemetery Association or Cemetery Trustee Group?
It's, it's a different entity.
Right.
And one of the things I suggested two years ago is incorporate the cemetery as part of the historic nature of the church. Because, I mean, for all purposes, it's the same thing. If I'm a layperson walking and driving, I don't know that that partition there is imaginary there. That is different property. You know, the people.
The trustees really are the ones that are.
They manage this.
Yeah, and they're really responsible for.
That's right.
Maintenance of it.
Yep. Maintenance, maintain, and improve. Those are key words in the code, Iowa code. I didn't make that up. You can search.
So I'm trying to piece this back together then.
Yes.
With the letter that you shared with us.
Yes.
That talks about the Carlisle Cemetery.
Yeah, that's another cemetery is maintained by the trustees as well. And it seems like.
We've got the same trustee group that's doing both.
It's the same three people. The Foles, this lady Pam, I forgot, and the other gentleman has been named there. There is two board members that knew. And the reason why they knew is because the former ones, the ones who invited me to the first meeting, resigned before the time it was over because they cannot deal with this type of behavior anymore. They wanted to do audits. They wanted to get estimations. They wanted to have transparency. And Veronica Ahern, she used to work for the state of Iowa. So think about that for a moment. She was putting her job in jeopardy because her job is the same office with the historical preservation part, being part of this whole thing. Plus, they have small children. And they shared with me and they said they're happy to come and talk to you and tell you their experience. They basically, they had a meeting scheduled in one address. They will go there. There were no meetings. They have gone to somebody else's. These meetings are conducted sometimes at somebody's home, which, I'm sorry, we have public building in Carlisle. It should be conducted there. At the end of the day, according to Jamie, he said, board supervisors have the power to rein any township in the jurisdiction they see.
I guess that was the question I would, I would like to ask Doug.
I'd like, I'd like to go on.
What is our role in, as it relates to townships and the management of these types of things? No, I'm talking to Doug.
Well, they're their own independent entity from us.
That's what I thought. So that's why I'm.
They're the ones who make the decisions related to this. I've been trying to look on here to see where the deed comes back to. I can't get a deed to pull up. If it is in fact Allen Township, then that's where.
Allen Township, yep.
Then that's where it needs to go back to.
That's right. But the monies come from the county. The county, Warren County, Iowa writes the checks for the townships. They don't get assigned monies.
Tracy, do we not do that as a service to the townships? The townships' money that they raise through their taxing mechanism. The county writes checks because the county auditor keeps track of the books for them.
That's right.
In conjunction with them probably. The clerk, I assume, does though.
Through the county. And he was going to tax the revenue.
We're just doing a function for them. We are not in control of the township itself.
I understand. But I also understand that they're dealing with public monies. So if they cannot self-cure themselves, who is the ultimate? The Iowa State Attorney? I mean, I tried to do this in the nicest way possible to come to you. Because, you know, I'm be levy for this too. Do we have a conflict of interest on self-awarding? That's another one too. The code says specifically that monies should be paid per the hour. There should be timesheets recorded. Where are those? I went to your office. I say, unfortunately, you were not there, so I cannot get the information. I talked to your other lady about this. So there's a lot of blurring. And because this has been done for many, many, many years, this is nothing new. So we continue this process and I think it should be changed. Whatever are the mechanism, you are the experts. I'm just a citizen.
Doug.
Township elects its trustees. So there's an elective process.
That's right.
Okay, just as these people are elected.
Yep.
So if you have a disagreement with the way the township is being run, then it's through the trustee process and through their election. So again, the township's running itself, we are not as the county over, I mean, we're not dictating to them how they need to run themselves.
Okay, maybe the next conversation, it would be having a private meeting with you as the lawyer for the county.
That'd be fine.
And maybe kind of represent the citizens of Allen Township and the trustees. Maybe that would be the next step. If that's what it needs to be done. We didn't want to get there, but I mean, seriously, it has to be fixed because the fence is just one, the tip of the iceberg of many things that are irregular.
Mister.
Dealing with cemeteries is just a minor, oh, well, not a minor. It's just one of the things that the townships are mandated to.
Yeah, but for example, a couple of, I think it was last year, Palmyra Church got awarded seventy thousand dollars through ARPA money for doing the extension of the back fence. That's a township too. So, you know, we're talking seventy thousand. Here, we're talking maybe five thousand to get between the repair and the paint. Is there a possibility you guys will be willing to help us with that or something of that nature? That's a possibility. We probably would have, no, I honestly, I don't care who does the mowing. Just I want transparency. I would like to be able to go to the township and I said, I would like to see the other proposals and get those documents. The response is, oh, there's no documents. That's a problem. So to solve that and forget about the mowing, we'd like to fix it. Do we have the support of the county to do that, like it was supported for Palmyra? Do I need to write a document in which asking you for funds as a citizen with the rest of the people's signature? That would be something that it will help with the cost?
I might intervene before they answer.
Okay.
It has to come from the township. The people that oversee the cemetery are the ones who are going to have to make that request to the board. It's, it can't be that I go around and I look at some monument out there and say, well, I think I'm going to make an application on behalf of myself to fix this monument, even though that might be in Belmont Township. That, the obligation to maintain that monument is on Belmont, okay? And they need to be the ones who come to this entity and make a request for either just regular funds or through ARPA or whatever the funding request is. So myself, the way I would see it is I need to go to the township, the Belmont, in my example, and say to them, hey, I think that we as members of this township or you as this township that oversees this monument, you need to make a request to do upkeep on this monument. And then it's, it's in their purview at that point to say, yes, I'll do, we, we agree with you, Doug. We're going to make that request or we would ask for your assistance in making that request to this funding agency or whomever.
No, I understand what you're trying to say. I, I think it's actually a good suggestion. The issue we have is there's already a preconceived desire to get rid of it. So we're not, it's almost like asking the wolf to don't eat the chickens. I mean, seriously, we, it's kind of a, there's no desire to fix it. And the proof, the fact that they came to my meeting and we asked for estimations and there was no estimation submitted to us, even though they exist. I show you the proof, the date, and then it was sent in. That, to me, is a problem. So I can go there until, you know, we all turn blue and what is going to be the solution? The fence is going to come down. And if we get to that, I want to make sure this gets very public. I have no, I have a lot of, I'm very well-connected. One thing I don't like is everything has to be pushed and shoveled here in Iowa to get things done until people get embarrassed and then things get moving. It shouldn't be that way. And that's my biggest issue. I don't want to bore you anymore, but seriously, I think. I don't want to bore you anymore, but seriously, I think the township, which, you know, we're citizens, we vote for, you know, in all elections, I think it will be considered something. And as a resident and a taxpayer person, I should be able to, you know, ask for help with this. At least to oversee it, get in the audits or get the documents we need or something. Because here's the thing, there's a fundraiser going on now, so according to what you're saying, the money cannot be used to do this fixing because the township is the one doing the, the work? What's going to happen if we hand a check for nineteen thousand dollars? Where the money's going to go? It's going to be, you know, paper trail of how the monies are spent? I don't know.
Well, I would, I would like, you and I have a conversation about it further outside of this.
Yep, I totally agree, we, I think we should. And at that time, maybe we'll get the other few people that are organizing this. I'm not part of the fundraiser, I didn't even post it into our Facebook page or into the website for historical preservation because of this key issue of how the monies are going to be dispersed and paid. I didn't want to be part of it. And that's the reason I'm speaking as a citizen, not as a board member at all.
Let's you and I sit down, and maybe we, how can we come to a remedy around the town?
Sure, I would really appreciate it. Let me know, you have availability. Makayla has my information, any day is fine, I live ten minutes away driving, so it takes me no time to get here.
If you, if you do have, if you do have communication with Allen Township and the people there, I, I don't know if the county should or shouldn't, and I'm not advocating that, but if this is a function of maintenance, repair money for that important fence, somebody could come to the county supervisors and ask for, and fill out an ARPA application for a project like that. And so I think that's where you should move to, to get Allen Township. If it's a money thing and, and the cost, and that's why they want to take it out, I think you'd find some value in having Allen Township request ARPA money for the repair, and make sure that's very detailed. But as one board member, I would definitely have interest in preserving the fence and providing some ARPA funds to help that happen. That would just, you know, let's-
I would share that same, same thing.
So you got the, you got the-
That's, that's great to know, because they did fill out an application last year, and then they were starting the process, and as a board, you had decided that we weren't going to use ARPA money for anybody in the public. So I'm very appreciative to hear this, thank you.
Yeah, it would, I think we're about ready to, it's not really, we haven't officially opened it up to public or anything outside of the county, the additional ARPA funds. But that is, that's the plan, to do that at some point, but this would be a good project that you should, you should get in front of us relative to ARPA.
Okay, a question. The one that was admitted already can be, still be used and processed through the, or it has to be a brand-new?
You have now.
I, I have the application that she filled out last year, and the one she has been working on this year. I can look, look over it and see if it has all of the pertinent information in it. So, yeah, we, we would like to have some bids in there as well, so.
Fantastic.
Yeah, and you've-
I appreciate everybody listening.
Well, thank you for, thank you for your time.
Peggy Fogel.
From the board?
From the township, yep, she's the clerk.
Well, don't you think that saving the fences, like, that's where I go to, like?
Yes.
The historical preservation of the fence would be very good, very good use of funds.
I think so, too.
And would be important to, important to me, so.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you for that discussion, Alfonso. Okay, the next item on our agenda is to receive and file reports from the quarter in the Humane Society. I would make a motion to receive and file those reports.
Second.
We have a motion in a second, roll call, please.
McIntyre?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Next item on our agenda is the supervisor's report, and I'll just go ahead and do a brief overview of my activities. We've had several work sessions and budget meetings in the last couple of weeks. I want to thank my colleagues for their hard work and their knowledge and their wisdom. We've went through every line item of our budget, and we're still not through with that process. We got another, another thirty days to certify our budget. Just to assure the public, there's been a lot of hard work and a lot of open-mindedness and a lot of good consensus work being done, a lot of good discussions on what is, what are our priorities at Warren County, and what are, where should our money be going, and maybe where it shouldn't be going. And I, for one, really appreciate those discussions, and it's really been the focus of the board of supervisors the last three months. I've had a couple of meetings with the sheriff, he's working on some contracts with some incorporated towns and cities for law enforcement, and I've been involved in those meetings. I was involved with some union meetings in the last couple of months to try to get to some agreements and support our county attorney and our sheriff and our dispatch as they try to come together to determine the correct wages, the correct hours, the correct schedules. It's very complex, and I can assure people that it's the board of supervisors' position to try to make a good, Warren County a good place to work. And that's been the focus, and I think we're, we've completed that negotiation. I want to thank our county attorney for spending a lot of time and helping us negotiate. I think that went well. There's also been some meetings to, to talk about dispatch and where dispatch should be structured within the county, and we're just starting to have some of those discussions again. We have a meeting with Boone County, a phone meeting, to discuss their structure, and they've just made kind of a, a change in how they, they handle dispatch, and we want to learn more from Boone County, and we'll be doing that on Thursday. I've also attended a couple of facilities meetings. There are potentially some significant changes that we're trying to learn how to do and how to execute. I see potential cost savings in how we're currently putting people in certain facilities. We own most of our facilities, but we also lease a facility, and the lease is fairly expensive. And since we've moved people from the buildings that we own into the Justice Center, it's freed up space, so trying to coordinate the correct way to move people into new buildings is, has been on our minds, and we don't, we don't really have a solution, but we've had a lot of discussions, and we're getting closer. For now, that concludes my report.
Basically, you've covered most of the things that I've been involved with. Because of the budget meetings that we've been doing, that's been our primary work that we've been looking at. I did attend the spring conference for county officials last week, and do have upcoming meetings this week with the Impact Board, the CICS, and Herta.
Thank you, Supervisor Snow.
All right. I've attended a special meeting with the board of supervisors and three work sessions, including some budget work sessions in there. The ISAC Supervisor Education Committee, and the ISAC Spring Conference, as well as Supervisor Snow. The ISIC's Board RIC meeting, discussion of projects and budget with the engineer and assistant engineer. Heard from our land use plan and ordinances contractor. Had a closed session with the board of supervisors and several meetings, as well as phone calls and emails to citizens and the folks out in the county. And want to remind everyone of tonight's meeting, our Max Levy Budget Hearing at six P.M. at the Indianola High School North Gym, use the northwest entrance. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor McIntyre. At this point, we're at the public input portion of our meeting. It's still allowed public, the public to come, just talk to the board of supervisors and let us know what's on your mind. Comments will be limited to three minutes per individual. The board will not take any action on the comments due to the requirements of the open, open meetings laws, but may do so in the future. No public input will be allowed for any of today's agenda items. Is there anybody from the public that would like to speak with the board? Let us know what's on your mind. Okay, next. Oh, hi there, could you?
Ms. Gasman, I'm sixty-one forty-nineth Avenue. Is the meeting tonight going to be livestreamed from high school, or is it not going to be available?
I don't think so, I don't know if we have those capabilities there or not.
We don't have capability to livestream, but it will be recorded and posted the next day.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you for that question. Anybody else from the public? Okay, our next meeting date is April fourth, two thousand twenty-three, at nine thirty A.M. I'll make a motion to adjourn this meeting.
Second.
We have a motion in a second, roll call, please.
McIntyre?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye. Thank you, everybody.